Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Danvers zoning Board of Appeals is now in session. I'd like to introduce the members of the Board. To my right, Mr. John Barner, Mr. Ken Scholes, Ms. Corinne Dougherty, myself, Robert Signetti; to my left, Jeff Sauer, Mr. Ken Javinin -- let me try that again. Mr. Ken Javinin, and Anthony Podesta. And we have our building inspector, Rich Maloney, and our secretary, Mary Beth The way we -- oh, please shut off your cellphones. The way we will proceed, the applicant will come before us at the microphone, because we're on TV, make their presentation. The Board will then ask questions. After the Board asks questions, we'll go to the audience for any comments or questions. Then the Board will deliberate and give their opinion on the case, and depending on what the deliberations are, I will give several options to the applicant. We will start with the -- we've got some continued cases and some withdrawals. We're going to do those first, and then we'll go on to the bottom of the agenda, which are the continued cases. And then we'll just follow the agenda. Oh. I guess we all received the minutes of the last meeting. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Done. All right, let's do -- let's do the withdrawals.
Mr. Chairman, this is the case of Diane, Senate shall trustee, docket 18-4766, requesting a variance for the addition of a drive-through lane in accordance with Table 1 of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 156 Andover Street. Mr. Chairman, we are in receipt of a letter. Hope all is well. This email serves as a request to withdraw without prejudice the honeydew application for a drive-through. Signed, Rosanna.
Okay, so if anybody's here for the honeydew application, they've just withdrawn, and we will not hear that case. Next one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next withdrawal--
Yeah, we got to vote on that.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we withdraw without prejudice the case on 156 Andover Street.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, our next withdrawal is 55 Park Street. Let's see. Where is it?
Bottom one at the top.
AOL Properties LLC, docket 18-4776, requesting a special permit to convert existing single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling in accordance with Section 30.2.4 of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 55 Park Street. And we are in receipt of another letter. Please make note for the record that I am withdrawing my application before the ZBA for 55 Park Street, Danvers, at this time. I apologize for the inconvenience, and I hope that this message can be related to the Board. Thank you. A.K. Olia.
Can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion, we withdraw without prejudice the application for 55 Park Street.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then we have one request for a continuance.
Mr. Chairman, this is 109 Hobart Street.
That was fun.
Glad you enjoyed it.
This is the application of Timothy Raisley and Brittany Dupont-Raisley, docket 18-4771, appealing the decision of the building inspector that the premises is being used for animal husbandry and is in error in accordance with MLG 40A at 109 Hobart Street. And we are receipt of a letter. Due to the unexpected death this week of an applicant's mother, I request that this matter be continued without presentation or discussion to the Board's meeting of September 10, 2018. Sincerely, Nancy S. McCann.
Do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue the case on 109 Hobart Street.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I just had a question on what you -- the definition of animal husbandry--
When we open the case, we will discuss it.
It's also listed in the zoning bylaws on the town website.
If you want to come down to the building department--
Oh, say, "Come down and see ya."
Come on down.
Come on down.
Thanks.
So if anybody's here for that case, that is continued until September 10.
Indulgence to the Beasley family.
Yeah. Okay.
This one's next?
Yeah, that's the next one, anyway.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, our next continued case is Gregory J. Maynard, docket 18-4753, requesting a variance and a finding to demolish an existing dwelling and construct a new single-family dwelling in accordance with Section 3.17.1.2.3 of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 28 Brentwood Circle.
Is he here? Come on.
And we have received this letter. Mr. Maynard apparently is waiting until May for the town meeting to approve the transfer of the land from the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, so I got the go-ahead from the town engineer and then planning, and the town manager agreed to hear my petition, so unfortunately, it's not until May or unless they have a special meeting prior to that, so it won't be heard until May. If that goes through, then I wouldn't need the variance, but I'd still need the finding for the footage, so I didn't know if we can kick the can down.
So you want to continue this until after May?
Yeah.
After the--
Yeah.
After the May town meeting. As long as we mutually agree, there's no problem, because I asked the building inspector, would there be a legal problem?
Yeah.
So I don't know whether the Board wants a comment. Do you want to ask the man questions? Why don't we start with you, John?
Yeah, so I just want to be clear. You're requesting, after getting approval from the town engineer, of the planning department to bring this before town meeting? Maybe I should go to the -- Mr. Chairman, if I could go to the building inspector. Maybe you can clarify.
Well, it's public land, so--
Yep, I know that.
--the town meeting has to dispose of it.
Okay. So it's really not anything to do with the planning department?
Well, first, it goes to the town engineer. Does the town need that land for anything? He answers the question yes or no. And then it has to get -- we have to create a warrant to dispose of the land.
So it's a warrant article to dispose of the land, which that meeting would take place at town meeting, which is May 2019. So if that goes through and it's passed, and you obtain this land, then at that point, you'd come back to this Board for a finding only.
Correct.
No further questions.
Okay.
I have no questions, thank you.
I have no questions, thank you.
I have no questions.
I have no questions.
No questions.
And I have no questions either. So what would we like to do?
Do you want to -- do we need to go out to the audience?
Do you want to go out to the audience? Any one in the audience have questions or comments?
Mr. Redstreet.
Yes, Mr. Redstreet.
Phil Brass, street precinct one, town meeting member. If the town deems this land excess so that it can be disposed of, is it put out to bid so anyone can purchase that piece of land, or is it going to be restricted to the person who wants the land?
Similar thing happened with Belgium and North Belgium Beach, because Belgium used it in the cul-de-sac, and when they -- when Kim Kelly built Woodvale, it connected the road. So there was a bulb on paper, but you didn't see it. And that was not that long ago, maybe the 2014 town meeting, where the town abandoned the cul-de-sac bulb and gave it to the property owner on its side.
Okay, so it could happen?
It could happen. It has happened in the past, yes.
Okay. Just a question, because some pieces of property that have been deemed excess by the Board have gone to town meeting, and the members -- town meeting members have turned down the release of the property for their own reasons. I just want to make sure in my mind that if the town decides to give it up, would it go to this gentleman, or to anyone, or if they decide to not release it? That was my only question.
Yeah, I think the most recent land was a landmark parcel that abutted the -- what's going to be a huge rail trail, the old railroad bed. And I think it's a purpose in that this is just a parcel land that's out on the street that really is no use to anybody--
Okay.
Except to create some setback for--
Okay.
But then, again, it's up to town meeting and the audience.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we--
But any other questions or comments from the audience? Go. Okay.
I would move that we allow this applicant to continue this case until after May 2019 town meeting to come forth with his finding.
All right, does he have to sign off on because it's--
We just drafted a quick--
Yeah. It's got to be mutual.
Yep.
Is that all right with you? Does that sound okay?
We don't have our 2019 schedule yet, though, right?
Should we go maybe to the first or the second?
The first meeting in June.
First meeting in June?
Yeah, that sounds good.
So what's that date?
Well, we don't know yet.
So I would extend that it would be our first ZBA meeting in June of 2019.
I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We'll see you next year. Yeah.
Our next continued case is that of Ogilvy St. Fleur, docket 18-4761, requesting a special permit to convert a garage into an extended family living area in accordance with Section 9.3 of the Danvers zoning bylaw at 198 Locust Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board.
Good evening.
One of your requests was that the owners show up. In lieu of that, we wanted a letter, and they just handed me a letter.
They wanted -- I think the Board wanted to question them.
I know.
Well, you know, we asked, you know, for someone to show up.
I know. I'm representing them.
Well, I did meet the architect and the owner of the property. They were sincere, went to work in the medical field at Knight &amp; Brockman. The wife stays home with the sick mother, so I did tell them the Board wanted to see him, and if not, they should at least draft a letter why they wouldn't be here. So they were sincere about it.
Do you want to read the letter, please?
Mr. Chairman, we are in receipt of a letter. Dear zoning board, I appreciate your review of the plans we had prepared to convert our garage into a living space. My husband and I cannot attend the meetings due to the fact that I must care for and tend to our aging family members, and my husband works out of town and cannot take time off from his job to attend. We appreciate your understanding and look forward to your review. These improvements to our garage will greatly improve our family situation. Sincerely, Ogilvy St. Fleur.
I think one of the questions that I would have is, who's going to live in the EFLA?
It's the aging family members that they -- they can have their private space.
Well, those aging aunt, uncle, brother, sister, mother, father.
I can't speak to the relationship.
That's why we wanted them here.
I know, I know. I think it's a father and mother situation, so I think that's what it is. I want to apologize to you right up front. I did make a drafting error, and if I can submit these in lieu of--
All right.
Thanks.
The only drafting error I made was the location of the room in front. If you'll notice--
Thank you.
This line should be back there. What the building inspector and I did is went out there and calculated the space underneath the roof and looked at what code allows us to take for living space and what is not living space. And after going through all those calculations and looking at the -- how we come up with it, we have 1,092 square feet, which is, I know, a little more than the 750, but that's primarily why we're here.
1,090.
We -- if you notice, we changed the stairs and created a storage space on the first floor outside, and we shrunk up that living space.
But what you're presenting us, and this is what we have to vote on, you've got--
It's 1,092 square feet.
552 living space on the first floor. Is that 540 on the second floor?
No.
This is what we're voting on.
Right, that's right.
So that's the 1092, yeah?
The 1092.
1092, all right.
That's exactly what you want, yes.
Okay, and Ms. Maloney was helpful in--
Oh, yes, yeah. Everybody's been really helpful, and it's--
Who's sitting on this case?
I wasn't here--
I have the minutes, so it's--
--for the line meeting, but--
Becky was one of them. Oh, you just listed everybody present.
I wasn't there.
It started in June, though.
I know we rotated, that's why.
Bob and I have been here for all of them. I know that much.
And Jeff.
And Jeff. So there's three.
Well, it's -- you know, it's--
Becky's not here.
All the alternates have been here too, but one of them is a voting member--
All right.
Because they had to take Ken's place. I just want to know who--
Becky's not here. As long as they were all here--
Right.
Any one of them can, yeah.
And deliberate.
Yeah, they were both here last time.
Yeah. So I won't vote on this, Mr. Chairman.
Right.
And then you can appoint any alternate you like.
I already did. That's my point.
Oh.
Last meeting.
Do you know who?
All right, we'll continue anyway, and then see if we can -- it may not be a problem. We'll start with you, Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the reduction in the size, but the thing I'm still struggling with is what is the common areas that are going to be shared with the rest of the house?
It's the space below, this connection--
This connection.
And then the upper deck.
The upper.
There's an upper deck that we were connected to--
And that'll be connected to the main house?
So that the -- those levels are tied together.
Okay.
And it's a common area down below, which is, you know, first-floor space.
Okay. And this is the connectors, just mainly the kind of the pass-through from one--
Yes. Right. They may put trash in there, they may put, you know, bicycles, or, you know, some sort of storage in there, but it's basically a pass-through.
Let me see. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Do the owners know they have to do the deed requirement--
Yes.
And who is going to be living in there?
Yes.
Yeah, so just as long as they know, because that's probably -- that's part of the reason they should have been here, so they could actually, you know, verify who is--
Well, they'll have to have an attorney draw up the deed or something, and then they can put that in there. You know, there's a deed restriction that only goes with this property, and then when it's sold, it's not. That restriction's off, which I don't think they're going to sell it, but--
All right, so as long as they are aware of that. No other questions?
Did you say the deed restriction comes off when they sell the property?
Is that true or not?
No.
Okay, okay.
It goes with the property.
Well, I'm not an attorney. I was just speculating.
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Corrine?
I just have one question. One of our concerns was the fact that this was a two-story, and how someone with any type of significant disability was going to be able to go up and down the stairs. And I thought as one of the alternatives, we suggested only having one level.
Correct.
And I see that this is still two stories, so how -- I mean, is going up and down the stairs not an issue for them?
No, it should not be an issue for them. They will be aided walking up and down. There's two levels that are connected, so with assistance, they'll be up and down the stairs. And if it gets to the point where they can't, then they may do a stair -- a chairlift or something inside, you know, one of those.
Okay. Thank you.
Ken?
No questions, thanks.
No questions. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Gleason, just to be clear, on the first floor, this area that's on the other side of the kitchen is just an open storage area?
Yes.
And that's part of the calculation of the square footage?
No, that is a doorway, I believe.
Yeah, but is that included as part of--
This on the first floor?
Mm-hmm.
This is part of this space, the connector space. This whole thing is part of the connector space.
All right, okay.
It's all common.
So this area right here is part of the 552, or is not?
This part is part of the 552, right there. There's what they're trying to do.
This hallway, this hallway, and this kitchen?
No, this is not part of the calculation. This right here is part of--
Okay, so that storage is part of the 552, right?
Right.
I think Corinne asked the same question, maybe the same way, but so the bedrooms are still on the second floor?
Right.
No further questions?
As somebody who's very close to getting in one of these EFLAs, the first thing I would want is a bedroom on the first floor. But you designed it, it's your business, and you've got customers. But I would have stressed that if the applicant was here.
We had a conversation about that, so--
Yeah. Unless you put in one of those electric chairs that go up and down the stairs, something like that.
All right.
All right, any further questions from the Board before we go to the audience? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matthew Doug, and town meeting member. Just a continuation of some of the discussions that we had at previous meetings about the size of this garage. I think it was stated in the past that it was around 1,500 square feet, just for this -- right now, it's a standalone, two-bay garage with a second floor. And now we're going to add on some type of common area to connect the garage to the main house. Is that my understanding?
Yes, it's part of the requirement for that.
All right. So the EFLA bylaw says 750 square feet is the maximum for an EFLA, and this thing looks like at least twice that size. So how do we come to terms with this additional space, and how do we justify it?
Want to answer that, Mr. Maloney?
Well, that's why the bylaw allows exceptions by special permits, so you can ask for relief from any of the requirements of the in-law bylaw with a special permit. That's why they're here. If it was 750 square feet, they wouldn't even be here. So, you know, if your law's non-conforming, you have to come before the zoning board. If the EFLA's oversized, or you want to vary from any of the requirements of the EFLA, and the Board has done a few of these for -- there's some exceptions specifically for handicap issues. We did one on Burley Street, remember? The mother was -- the grandmother was in a wheelchair. You oversize, the in-law was 1,100 square feet, you get handicap access. So there's different reasons, and that's up to the zoning board, that's why they're here.
All right, fair enough. So this additional kind of common area that's going to be used to connect the garage to the main house, that's going to bump up the square footage to, you know, considerably. Now, what -- I have a photo of it, so it's not clear to me, because on the ground floor on both structures, there are garage doors. So how are those going to be converted into kind of a living space that won't make it look like garage bays anymore?
Well, there are -- there's currently two garages, and we're taking that one garage, and we're going to put bay windows in the bay doors where the doors are, so it'll look like a living space.
All right. So the garage, the standalone garage, those high doors will be taken out and redesigned to look like an actual house?
Yes.
I was going to say, come on and take a look at that.
And if you could just go through again, how are they going to be connected, and what is the common area? Because I see that there's a kind of a terrace--
This is the house over here.
Yeah.
This is a connector. This is common, with the storage spaces common, and then the decks wrap around, so it's one-level deck type.
So this deck here is going to slide over to see how it's stand -- see how it's separated there?
Right, so in the back, the deck comes around the back of the house. They're going to connect the two, so the second floor beaches--
Okay, all right. All right, well, it's a lot of work. There's not really any neighbors there. I think this house is on like six or seven acres, so no one in close proximity, but so. All right, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else from the audience? Questions or comments? All right, back to the Board, deliberation.
Mr. Chairman, before we deliberate--
Yes, sir.
Could I ask one more additional question?
Absolutely.
Mr. Gleason, so I know the original drawing, by my old notes here, we were at about 1360 for square footage.
Yeah, it's about 1380, I think.
1380, okay. 1380.
Yeah.
Can you summarize what changed to go from 1380 down to 1092? What did you change? Because I've been looking at the two of these, and they look pretty similar.
They're pretty similar. When we look at the code criteria--
All right, well, actually, let me cut you off. So is it just because we measured it with the building inspector, and we really didn't make any changes to this?
No, we did make changes to it, but what I did initially is I took the outside measurements of the building, which technically, the walls are not living space.
Sure.
So when you look in retail space, and you're looking at, you know, what's rentable, what's not rentable, and you do condos, how much space did you really buy? And one of the directions was it has to be livable -- living space. So when we take the thickness of the walls out, and we measure the slope of the roof when it -- where the five-foot dimension is on that roof, because it slopes up, and we looked at where the bump out in the front goes. The bump out's about two feet. The five-foot dimension goes back almost seven feet. And you take the interior of the walls, then you measure that, that'll give you that dimension. And when I redid the first floor, I took the -- moved the stairs in, made that storage space outside space, and calculated from the interior space and even included the stairs.
So the stairs moved, and they are now outside?
No, no, they're inside, but what I did is I created storage space, if I can.
Yep.
What I did is the -- there's this storage space, and the stairs go here, and we go up, so the storage space is underneath this, right there.
So by making that storage space, it removed 300 square feet?
Yeah, plus by--
But it's still there? The storage space is still there, right?
Yeah, but it's not living space.
Okay.
And when we calculate living space--
All right. I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Did you--
I have one question.
Sure, go ahead.
I don't seem to have a drawing in my package of what the exterior is going to look like when all the work is done. Did you include that?
I didn't do the existing house. I just did the -- this is what we're talking about. I didn't do the--
You didn't do one? I just wanted to see with the entire project, like how the house is going to look when it's completed.
I didn't add the house.
Okay.
So, pretty much, all you did was re-measure a different way.
And I moved the stairs, and I'm almost four feet.
You moved the stairs.
It's almost four feet.
And you got the same amount of space.
No, we don't, actually. We really don't, because the -- we took that first-floor space, lost about four feet We really don't, because the, we took that first-floor space, lost about four feet times 20, you know, not 20, but it's some dimension. But we shrunk the first-floor space a lot.
See, I heard you just measured differently. That's what I heard.
Oh, we did, we did. I did measure differently.
Yeah.
And then I shrunk, I shrunk the space inside. Moved that stair, the stairs at four feet times the length of that building, so it's...
Well, kind of if you say so, you know? All right, Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I said, my question before, the thing I struggle with is the lack of the common area. I get that there's a pass-through from one house to the EFLA, and then the deck that connects the, but, I mean, to me, you close the doors in the EFLA, and it's a, it's a separate apartment. It's completely on its own. We're looking for shared spaces like a laundry room, or a living area, or something where, something that it's not totally separate and can be used as an apartment in the future. And I just, I didn't see that with the original plans, I don't see that with these plans, so I wouldn't vote for it.
Well, by create, if that common area creates living space, then it adds to the total, so I can't...
No, I understand, I understand. I know you're trying to work with what you have, it's just the way that it's currently set up is it looks like a house, and, you know, the walk-through common area, and then a separate apartment on the other side. So I just would vote for it in this.
Ken?
Is there a door on the front there, it looks like, right here? Is that the door for the EFLA?
No, that's the door to the common area.
Okay. So the common area is not really attached to the house? Can you walk through the house and into the EFLA?
Yes. Walk, walk between the two, right?
I share the same sentiment as Anthony, that I don't think I would vote for this.
I think it's, I agree with my other two board members, I don't like the lack of real shared common area, but I just think it's too big. I would vote for it like this.
Okay.
I agree, I just think it's too big. It's almost like it's its own separate house on the property, so I would vote against it.
Ken, you're not...
I have a comment, though.
Yeah.
I just think that the main house has a kitchen, and this has a kitchen. There's nothing to share. That's just the passageway. That's my, just my comment.
Okay, John?
Yeah, and to echo the rest of the board, I mean, you know, you can access this house by going through a garage, and then into a hallway. You know, to me, it's, it's not an apartment, it's a second house, so it's too big in my eyes, and I would not vote for it.
I also agree. I, I think, you know, it seems to me like we're playing with magic here. I think it's just too big, and I will not vote for this either. So you've heard the board, you're certainly not going to get any votes, so what would you like to do? Would you like to go back to the drawing board and continue?
Well, if you're, the only way for me to accomplish the goals that you're presenting to me is make that common area living space, and maybe make one of the garage doors a garage again, and lose that first floor.
Well, that's what I thought initially you were going to do. You were going to keep one of the garages, and that would cut down the living space.
Yeah, it's not what they want it to do.
Oh, well, you might, you might want to present that again, then, because the garage is not living space, and it's a way you can accomplish what you want in...
Well, my concern with that common space, by making it living space, I just add more square footage to the EFLA, so...
Then you take the garage out, or you put a garage in.
Okay.
I mean, I don't want to design it for you.
Oh, I understand, I understand.
But this is another reason why maybe they should be here and hear these comments. You know, sometimes it's, it's not what I want, it's what I can get.
I understand.
You know, so you might want to convey that to the applicant. So would you like to continue, or what do you want to do?
Based, based on what you're presenting to me, I don't think...
And if we vote, you're not going to get it, so...
Yeah, it's already a no, so if we continue, and you give me more time to look at it, I'm not going to be able to be ready in a month. I'm going to have to reexamine this.
Give us a date, when...
What's the...
October 24th, October 15th. October 29th?
October, the first date in October is...
October 15th.
October 15th. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue this case till October 15th.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, our next continued case is Scott and Martha Pike, docket 18-4767, requesting a variance from a setback to install an in-ground pool on a pre-existing non-conforming lot in accordance with Section 7, Table 2 of the Denver zoning bylaws at 8 Peachtree Lane.
Chairman and the board, certified plans?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's pretty much all we asked for, was to get a surveyor out there and do this. So this is it?
That's it, yes.
And your rear setback is 10, 10 feet, is that it?
I'm asking for 10. The 15 is...
Well, how much is...
It says 10.
It is 10, yeah.
Yeah.
It's 10, it's real 10.
A real, yeah.
Actually, I gained four feet.
There you go.
There you go.
Win, win.
It was worth the deal.
There you go.
That's why we do those things.
All right, so you ready for questions from the board?
Please, yes.
If we have any? John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the, it turned out the mortgage plot and the surveyed were not the same. The, you gained some space, it sounds like.
More after, like you have a question.
Yeah. No further questions?
I have no questions, Senator.
I have no questions.
I have no questions.
I have no questions. Last time, I mentioned that fence, though. Are you going to put up that fence on the left side when you're done with the pool?
I'm going to put a fence around the whole backyard.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, I have to...
No other questions?
I just want to, yeah, make sure.
No questions.
I have no questions either. Any questions or comments from the audience? Right back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank the applicant for getting it surveyed, and I would vote for this application.
I'm not voting on this, so...
I would vote yes.
I will vote yes.
I would vote this.
And I would vote as well.
And I also vote yes. Can I have a motion, please?
And this is for a variance. Mr. Chairman, I move that the board grant the variance to install an in-ground pool on a non-conforming lot, the hardship being the size and shape of the lot. This condition does not affect other properties or structures in the same zoning district. A literal enforcement of the zoning bylaws would involve a substantial hardship to the applicant, and granting this variance will not create a substantial detriment to the public good and will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaws.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good luck. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Mr. Chairman, our last continued case is that of Rafael Baez, docket 18-4770, requesting a variance and a finding to construct an addition and a garage on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling in accordance with Section 3.11 and Section 7 of the Denver zoning bylaws at 10 Hazen Avenue.
Good evening, Bob Griffin again, on behalf of the applicants, Mr. and Mrs. Baez. We had our meeting last month, we talked about, we have a non-conforming lot and a non-conforming building, we had some modest building additions that were proposed, and I think the discussion focused on the size of the garage. At the time, we were showing 6.8 feet to the side of the building, to the overhang on the side of the building. You asked, and we tried to get that to 10 feet to the building wall, and Mr. Baez's architect, Lyle Folsteph, has reduced the width of the garage, so it no longer is 24 feet, it's now 21 and a half feet. He's still been able to squeeze two garage bays in there, or at the 10.3 feet that you were looking for. And I'd be happy to show you the architectural plans, but they look just like they did before, except that the garage got a little skinnier.
That's kind of what we asked, anyway, we...
We were listening.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So other than the change to the garage, the addition, the little deck off the back, the new eaves all around, everything else stays the same?
That's correct.
Okay. No other questions?
So that setback was 6.8, now it's 10, you said?
Well, it's 10.3 to the wall, it's 9.3 to the one-foot overhang. So I think the 6.8 measured it to the overhang, it's 9.3 to the overhang, 10.3 to the building wall.
Okay, I have no other questions.
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right.
I have no questions, thank you.
No questions, thanks.
None here, Mr. Chairman.
And, John, you had no questions?
No questions.
I also have no questions. Did we ask, any comments or questions from the audience? Okay, back to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, pretty simple. You know, we had a discussion last time, we talked about moving to get 10 feet to the wall, which is what you did. I had no problems with any of the other changes last meeting, I still don't, so I would vote for this.
Ken?
I too would vote for this.
I will vote for this.
I will vote for this.
John? Ken, John?
Yes, I would vote in favor of this application.
I also will vote for this. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move, oh, did we go, no, never mind, sorry. Did we go to the audience? I thought we didn't.
We already did.
Sorry. I'm trying to take the process too much. This is a variance?
And a two-part finding, right?
And a finding.
Oh, a trifecta.
Sorry, John, I cannot bring this one, kid.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board grant the variance to...
Right side.
Yeah, for the right-side setback, as this is a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling, the hardship is the location of the building on the property. This condition does not affect other properties or structures in the same zoning district. A literal enforcement of the zoning bylaws would involve a substantial hardship to the applicant, and granting this variance will not create a substantial detriment to the public good and will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaws. And that is for the drawing revised 7/23/2018.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Okay, now we want the finding?
Two-part finding. Let's see. Mr. Chairman, I move that the board find that the proposed addition to the right-hand side?
The front, the front of the garage and the left-side addition.
Front of the garage and left-side addition, as shown on the plans, again dated 7/23/2018, increases the non-conformity.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board grant the finding for the proposed two alterations I already mentioned, as shown on the plans, as it will not be substantially more detrimental than what presently exists.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Okay, done, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our first new case is that of Timothy Raisley and Brittany Dupont Raisley, oh, actually, we continue that, I'm sorry.
We continue that.
Our next new case is Rebecca Heiss, docket 18-4772, requesting a finding from a side setback to replace a deck in accordance with Section 3.11a and b of the Denver zoning bylaw at 3 Alma Lane.
Mr. Chairman, I'll recuse myself from this one.
Okay. I actually have a question of the building inspector on this. Anthony will be the voting member on this one. Okay, what would you like to do?
I would like to tear down the existing porch that's rotten.
Mr. Maloney, quick question. On this case, all right.
I take it you're Rebecca?
I am.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
When I went out to look, she's got a front porch, and she wants to make it a little bigger. I thought front porches don't count.
They count, this is the right-side setback. Porches are exempt from the front setbacks only.
Oh, all right, so she, I got it. All right.
Yeah, we count that because it's such a small increase, but we don't, you know, we can't override this on...
All right, you know, when I looked at the front setback, you're all right, it was a side setback.
Right-side setback.
All right, now you clarified it. So basically, that's all you want to do, is make that little porch a little bigger?
Thank you.
All right. We'll, is that it? That's, that's short and sweet. Ken?
Thank you, I don't think I have any questions.
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman.
You just gained two feet on the porch, no other questions?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
And I don't have any questions, very simple what you want to do. You want to make a little porch a little bigger, and keep the same setbacks. Any questions or comments from the audience? All right, back to the board, deliberations.
I have no problem with this, I would vote for this.
I would vote for this.
I will vote for this.
I would vote for this.
I'd vote for this.
And I also will vote for this. Now, can I get a motion for the finding? This would be a two-part finding.
Is it a two-part?
All residents are.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, the board find the proposed addition, as shown on the plans...
Increases the non-conformity.
Increases the non-conformity. Do I need to know the date of the plan here? Does it have a date?
There's only one plan.
Only one plan, so...
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Okay, next part.
I move that the board grant the finding for the proposed addition, as shown on the plans, as it will not be substantially more detrimental than what presently exists.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck.
Thank you.
That was quick. I think we broke a record.
I know.
Yeah.
That's all right.
Mr. Chairman, our next case is Josh and Michelle Edelstein, Edelstein, docket 18-4773, requesting a finding from front setbacks to construct an addition to an existing single-family dwelling in accordance with Section 3.1 and Table 2 of the Denver zoning bylaws at 11 Baldwin Road. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Thomas Frango, so I'm a builder, and I'm here with Josh Edelstein. His wife, Crystal, is at home taking care of the kids. It says Michelle in the application, that was my mistake. Josh has several wives. It's Crystal. Anyway, the application is to add a garage to the left side of the house, 24 by 24, and add a second story over the entire structure, the garage and the main part of the house, which would be about 1,500 square feet, the entire second floor. The garage, as you see it, the left rear corner is in the no disturbance zone. This has already gone to the Conservation Commission, it's been approved. The plan you see has been approved already. 20.3 foot setback to the front left corner of the garage. And Josh is back in the corner of Baldwin Road, so it really affects nobody.
Can I ask, I believe this is, it asks what it's zoned for. I believe this is an I-2, you did write it down? Can I ask, I believe this is... It asks what it's zoned for. I believe this is an R2. You did write it down.
It's single-family, it's going to be.
No, 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 but the zone means the setbacks... The zone affects the setbacks, whether it's a single family or not.
It says R2. R2 according to the bill.
So just so the board knows, it's an R2 zone, so the...
So it's a 30-foot front setback.
Okay, excuse me for interrupting.
No, no problem. So we're asking to allow the garage in the position shown on the plan and then build the second story over it. The plan shows a cape roof on the second story over the garage, and Josh actually wants a full wall there and another roof, gable roof over that. So the ridge on the garage would be the same height as the ridge on the house.
And when you measured, you measured from the eaves? Are there going to be eaves on the garage?
Yes.
And did you measure from the eaves, not the walls?
I'm not clear about the question.
You have to measure from the furthest point. So if you've got a one-foot eve hanging over...
It's measured from the foundation, so you'd have to subtract a foot if you're going to measure from the eve.
That's what I'm saying. You have to... Yeah.
This is the front lot?
A front is okay, I don't think.
Oh, wait.
Side setback. He's... What's wrong? It's showing 20.
20.2.
20.2?
Looks like he's got plenty of room.
Yeah.
So the only issue here, it looks like it's just Baldwin Road. The eaves are exempt on the fronts.
Oh, okay.
Because it's only a 15-foot...
Side setback. Which he means.
Just that front corner.
Just the front corner. Even the eaves...
In the front.
Yeah, but the eaves are on the side, aren't they?
Not on the front.
The eaves are encroaching on the front setback.
Oh, there wouldn't be any problem on the side setback. I got it. I got it. All right, well, you ready for questions? Or are you still making your presentation?
No, I'm done.
All right, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you mentioned Conservation Commission. When I visited the property, I noticed it's like a brook or something right there. Wait, what do you know about that and where does it go?
Josh would probably know better than I would.
Can you come up to the mic and identify yourself?
Good evening.
Do me a favor and take off your hat.
Oh, sorry about that. Jeez. Josh Edelstein, homeowner. So the brook that runs behind all the homes there, it's, for the most part, it's kind of runoff that comes down from the hill where the water tower is up there. It follows back along the property and then goes and basically empties out into the ocean, I believe, down through... I think it goes actually underneath a culvert across Foster Street.
Okay. So hold on one second. Mr. Chairman, if I could ask the building inspector, so do we only get a letter from Conservation?
Well, before they get a building permit, we'd send them up there, so.
Okay, so they would have to see this. Okay. And the addition's 24 by 24? Is that what I got?
Yes.
And it's two stories?
Right.
All right, no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So our hardship on this is the placement of the home on the lot. Is that our issue here? Which makes us lose that setback? Is that the case here? I guess I'm asking you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, sorry.
That would be the hardship.
That would be the hardship?
Well, yeah.
The location of the home on the lot?
It's an undersized lot.
Undersized lot.
Location of the structure on the lot. If you slide the addition back, now you might be fighting the side setback.
Yeah.
And choose your poison. All the lots up in this, we call them...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The Apple Orchard Streets, Baldwin. They're all undersized. A lot of the pool that was here earlier...
Yeah, beach lane, yeah.
A lot of the 1,000-square-foot lots.
Yep.
I have no further questions. Thank you.
Mary Beth, Ken is voting on this one. Okay.
So the only issue we really have is the front, correct?
Front setback.
I have no other questions.
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Ken?
I have no questions.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Basically, you want to build a garage with, I guess it's rooms, or is it storage or rooms up above?
It's going to be rooms. My wife comes from a big family and she's planning the same for us. We've got two boys so far.
The only question I have, you've got an existing shed and it looks like it's not on your property.
Yeah, that's the... We've had that shed there for a while, and then there was an in-ground pool before. It's kind of a haphazard area. I think the majority of the lots all across are kind of... Have everything kind of scattered around a bit.
So is the shed on your property or not?
I think from the plans, it is off a bit in the back.
Well, who's... Is it your neighbor? Is it encroaching on your neighbor?
No, there's no neighbor behind us. That's all. I believe that's conservation area.
Oh.
I don't think it's owned by anything except for the conservation.
It's owned by Folly Hill.
That's the developer of the big subdivision.
So they own the lot next to it?
It looks like Folly Hill LLC is the developer of all the land up there.
Okay, I just... Hey, that's conservation land?
I believe so, yeah.
The conservation people have anything to say about a shed on conservation land?
It's not conservation land. It's privately owned.
Oh, okay, that's not a problem. All right, any questions from the audience?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matthew Dugan, town media member. So while it is privately-owned conservation land per se, it's actually... It's either vegetated wetlands, it's a resource area, and it's definitely part of this property is non... Not non-buildable, but non-disturbulable. So when we have structures in wetlands, resource areas, that's a mass state violation when you disturb wetlands without a permit, a mass DEP permit. So concerned with that. So at the Concom meeting, there was relief from the non-disturbulable area. Why did you need that? Was there... Is there part of this structure in that... Existing structure in that area? Is that why you were able to get relief for that?
I believe there's about 78 square feet that cuts into the no disturbs zone, which is 35 feet from the wetlands. And for the most part, with the size of the lot and the garage, we actually pulled the garage forward to try and get as much out of that as possible. But as the wetlands kind of comes around and follows one of the edge lines of our lot, it just kind of cuts over in that back corner.
All right. Well, I think that needs to be addressed. That shed back there that's in the woods, I think that needs to be addressed prior to gaining any approval from this board, I think. This is kind of off the beaten track. It's, you know, it's down at the base of that water tower that's up on the hill, so it's not really an area where people actually go into to observe any kind of a wetlands violation, which is always a concern. Thank you.
What do we do with something like that? Just notify the...
So did you build the shed or was the shed...
No, the shed was there. I re-sided it, and to be honest, I got to put a new roof on it too, because...
The board can make a condition that the shed gets moved onto his property. It's setbacks. Out of the condition of the issue with the relief.
Well, I think part of the problem is that even if he moves the shed on his... He needed relief to build his garage, right?
Correct, yeah.
You're going to need...
So you're going to need the same relief to move the shed, right? To put the shed in...
I think it's like a 10 by 12 or some... I don't really... I don't know.
Then they thought it just has to be five foot setbacks.
No, we're talking conservation land, is what I'm saying.
We'll let Conservation worry about that.
Okay.
I'm not sure how long this structure's been there, so...
Well, I know it's probably grandfathered, but...
If he moves it, now we're falling into a new category, I think is what you're saying.
Yeah, he had to get relief to build this garage, which is way almost to the road. He pulls the shed and he must be within that no-build zone.
Yeah, the 100-foot buffer zone, I believe, actually goes all the way into... In front of our property. So our entire home is in the 100-foot buffer zone where, I believe, anything that we'd pretty much do, we'd have to...
Typically, a no-disturb, then a no-build zone. And then, so you can build inside the 100-foot zone. It's the limits. It's 25, 25, 25, no disturb, 25, not build, and then...
Well, what I'm hearing you saying is he can pull his shed onto his property and stay five foot off the property line? Is that what you're saying?
For zoning purposes.
I know, but for real purposes. Can he do that being in that wetland zone?
That's not my jurisdiction.
Not my job, man.
His application isn't for that anymore, so...
I mean, if he bought the house and sits there forever...
It's grandfathered.
I know. I know it's grandfathered.
That's something that the Folly Hill LLC should deal with. If it's on their property, they deem it an issue encroaching on their property as adverse possession issues. It's been there for 20-plus years. You know, that's not before this board, so...
All right. Convince me. All right, any other questions from the audience? All right, John, deliberations?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe several times this board has allowed relief about the halfway point of setbacks. This is clearly more than that, so I would have no problem voting in favor for this, and I think the shed is fine right where it is.
I'm sorry I asked.
Don't mess with him.
He had to throw the shed in there. I have no problem. Obviously, the lot's undersized. It's the existence of this house on the lot. I would vote for this.
I would vote for it, too. I mean, the way the house was situated, you really have no other choice.
Jeff?
I would vote for this.
Ken?
I would vote for this, too.
I'd vote for this as well.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with this, and forget I said anything about that shed. Do I have a motion, please?
What should, Mr. Chairman?
I move that the board find that the proposed garage, as shown on the plans, increases the non-conformity.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move that the board grant the finding for the proposed garage, as shown on the plans, as it will not be substantially more detrimental than what permanently exists.
Present.
Presently.
Presently, sorry. What presently is that?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our next case is Anthony J. Calitri, Vignetto LLC, docket 18-4774, requesting a special permit to cross district boundaries and requesting a variance from side setbacks to construct a three-car garage in accordance with Section 30.2.7 and Table 3 of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 73 Collins Street. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Bill Nolan from Savoy Nolan Architects. I'm here representing Tony Calitri, the owner of the property. We're seeking to construct a 30 by 60 building on this piece of property. It's in the Route 114B zone. This is a unique property because it's casualty of zoning and boundary lines crossing through the property. The front portion of the property here is residential. R2, I believe, or 1, sorry, yeah, residential 1. And then the back half of the property here, it continues down here quite a bit, too. I'm only showing a partial, is 114B. We're looking to put a garage utility building. Mr. Calitri owns several pieces of property throughout Danvers. He owns 73, which is this project here. He also owns 75 and some others. He has maintenance equipment that he wants to be able to store, get it off out of the yard, be able to service it, and also have a workshop in this building to maintain the buildings. We're in the Route 114B. We're seeking relief on... Well, we're seeking relief, and I wasn't entirely sure if it's a special permit or a variance across boundaries. But we're seeking, I believe it's a special permit to cross boundaries from the entrance from the street, Collins Street, to the back half of the property. Got it all worked out?
I thought we had it all worked out.
Okay.
We have special permit to access eaves across district boundaries.
That's what I believe it was.
So we don't need the variance?
The variance is not needed.
No, so the variance is actually for a side setback. For the building in Art and Route 114B, it's a 50-foot side setback. Our hardship here is the shape of the lot. It knife points towards the front here. We should put this kind of right in the middle of the property, and we'd still be kind of struggling to get it. When you talk, turning a truck with a trailer around here, this cites it a lot better. We also... Mr. Calitri's actually spent a decent amount of time on the site, trying to site the building. Went out and met with him at least two occasions. We walked the site around this area, and there's kind of a natural hillside here. So this structure will be nestled into that hillside, so actually the back half of this will seem pretty low. It's about four-foot difference from the top to the bottom. So it's great, you know, great location for the site. There's also some existing trees that we're trying to maintain. There's a beautiful tree here, and then some back here. By pushing the building back here as it widens out, you're pushing the building far away from the street, which increased, you know, driveways, increased utilities on there. So there's a financial hardship to pushing this building back. It's zoned as 114B, but it's really very close to a residential neighborhood, so we're trying to, with the design of it, keep it residential scale, residential material siding. There are two garage doors on what would be, I guess, the front side, and then one door back here. It's a single-story space with a fairly low-pitched roof. And again, we're trying to have, make it feel a little bit more residential with the siding, and we added a cupola on it. I think that is the extent of the presentation. If you have any questions?
Okay. Corinne will be voting on this one. Been on the board a long time. We did a property a couple of doors up, similar to this, if I remember.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, the same thing. 114, R1.
Yeah.
One of your neighbors, a couple of... Yeah, yeah. It just jogged my memory, that's all.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a few lots down here that have that.
Yeah, two zones.
Yeah. It happens. Every town has their...
Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The one question I have is, in your explanation, you mentioned the use isn't planned to be commercial, but then you're also talking about using it as a... For the owner's property, yeah, property maintenance as part of his business. Does that fall under a commercial use?
No, it's not part of his business necessarily. He's a property owner.
Right.
I mean, it's not technically a business. It's not going to be rented out as commercial use. It's basically a garage that he's going to store his maintenance equipment in, work on his maintenance equipment in the off-season, and there's a workshop here, you know, as things break down. He does most of the maintenance for the... He cares for most of the properties, the majority of them anyways, by himself.
And these are mostly residential rental properties?
They're all residential, yeah.
Okay.
And Tony, but the Calitries in general do take care of their properties.
Okay. I have no other questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, good.
And you said you were going to keep a lot of those trees behind the garage?
Yeah, yeah, I think actually where the building's sited, most of the trees, there aren't really any trees there. It's just kind of scrub. He did remove some scrub stuff and identified all the trees that we wanted to save. I believe he also spoke with his neighbor over here. The neighbor just asked about, you know, the ability to keep these trees.
Yeah, there's a buffer between them, yeah.
Yeah, we're trying to be very sensitive that this is abutting a residential neighborhood, so that's kind of been the design goal right from the beginning.
Excellent. I have no other questions.
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
I just have one.
Sure.
The existing structure in the front, it says two units, so those are two rental units?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what should our setback be in that 114 district?
I dropped the ball. Should have said that. It's in 114, it's B, and residential, it's 8. I'm sorry, in 114B, it's 50.
50.
Five oh.
It's 8, yeah, 5-0. So we're asking for 20. And again, that's where that hill begins, so we kind of just nestled it right into that hill.
Okay. I mean, you don't think we could shift that proposed driveway a little bit and get a little bit more on that setback?
Sure.
I'd like to see a little more than 20, where it's zoned for 50.
I heard half. Is that... Would that be acceptable to the board?
Half would be a lot better, to me.
Yeah. We talked about that, and actually, to be honest with you, probably should have just did it right from the beginning. 25 is certainly acceptable.
No further questions. Thanks.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill, so I can't really read the drawing. What's the square footage of the building?
18.
1,800?
Yeah.
And so you've mentioned repairs. So what, like, what types of equipment will be housed in there?
Yard equipment. Oh, the equipment and the workshop?
Yeah.
Yeah, woodworking, things like that. Stuff that you'd have in your basement.
So we're not doing engine repairs, lifting out engines out of trucks and things like that? I guess...
It is not a commercially... It's not a commercial garage. It's not going to be making money.
Yeah, I guess I'm more worried about down the road. Mr. Chairman, if I could, ask the building inspector. So Rich, I guess I've been on the board a little while, but I don't remember doing something quite like this where there was a residence in the front of a lot, and then we did a long driveway to a second building. Is... I guess is this still going to be, even though it's in the Route 114B zone, is it still a residential building?
That's essentially, you know, he talked about putting the residence back there originally, and he would have needed variance because they don't allow residences in 114B, and he came up with this iteration where they own the properties, this property, and the next two over. So they were just looking for some kind of facility to, again... So they were just looking for some kind of facility to, uh, again, the maintenance equipment, to loan equipment. Um, so we do, the zoning bylaw anticipates the crossing of the, uh, zone here, Collins Street and down on Center Street, because we have the, the R-two way, which is behind the R-two, and we have some industrial properties there, so the zoning board, uh, the zoning, the town meeting has set up this, uh, special permit process to cross district boundaries anticipating this.
So if this prop-
Has been anticipated.
Okay. So if this property were to change hands, though, what prevents it?
You just want to put strict controls on, you know, if, if the board grants any relief is, is, you know...
I'm just looking at it down the road to see, I mean, his intentions are good, but maybe somebody does want to run a auto repair shop down there.
You want to make it very clear that if he, he grants relief in the decision that it's voted with, that we, you know, neither of somebody in the future can enforce what the board...
Yeah, okay. Um, Bill, what, what, um, so, uh, like, so, uh, wa, water runoff, that kind of stuff, what's going to be put in place, uh, to...
We're not really, uh, so the driveway is going to be, um, actually, I, I'm sorry, uh, part, I guess part of it's going to be paved. There's, uh, we're following the natural topography of the land, so we're not creating any, uh, additional runoff.
But it is paved and part of it's gravel?
Yeah, a portion of it's paved, although we haven't really gotten into all the, the, the details yet. Um, I'd like to own pavement there. A portion of it's going to be, um, gravel, certainly part of it is. So, uh, we're not really creating a ton more, uh, impervious surface here. Uh, we'll have, uh, gutters on the, on the roof so we can control what's there, but we're not, we're not looking to do any driveways.
And this would not go to site review, correct?
No, it would be accessory to the two family.
And so it's not a planning board. It's only going to be us. Um, what kind of lighting will you do back there?
Uh, it's, we didn't get into that discussion, and I'm sure there'll be lights at the doors, um, just to, to light, you know.
So I'm not putting a big streetlight in with halogens or any of that kind of stuff?
No, it, it would be something against similar to-
You'd take that as a condition?
Sure.
Okay.
Right.
Um, I have no further question.
Okay, as I said, I, again, I can remember we did one of these before, and I think we did one on Sylvan Street, too, where the, the back of the property, uh, is, is actually zoned for the, the shopping center.
Yeah, that was just recently.
Yeah.
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 Just playing the cards that we dealt.
What, what, um, I think what we're getting at is some sort of condition, and I don't know how quite-
Yeah, that's why I was asking.
That this stays, I guess you'd call it a residential garage, as opposed to, we want it, if it gets granted, we want it to stay what it is.
Yeah.
We don't want the next guy to come in and start repairing automobiles and stuff in there because it's, it, it's in a commercial zone. So I'm, I'm thinking, how can we word it?
Or condition it.
Condition it so this stays the same. I don't have a problem with it. And you, and you're going to move it over five feet, right? What do you move in the building or you move in the driveway?
Well, it's, it's the building setback.
You're going to move the back that way.
You're going to move the building.
I mean, everything's going to go with it, but we'll just, we'll just kink it a little bit.
All right.
So the setback where it says twenty, we'll say twenty-five.
That's my only question. How, how do we assure that it stays what you're asking it to be? And, you know, not become something, uh, you know, I'm sure as long as you own the property, you're, you're not going to want a garage in back of your, your tenants, because they're not going to pay the big rents.
Can you, can you add a condition to, if he wants to use it as anything other than what we've described here? He'll have to come before this board and ask for permission?
All right, well, I'm not quite sure what you described. You, it's, um, he's going to have a woodworking shop. You got, you got a picture of three cars in, in the garage.
A garage with a woodworking shop that, that he's going to use. It won't be rented out.
And he's going to, what, fix his snow blowers and lawn mowers in there or no?
Well, I mean, yeah, I, I don't, I don't know if we're going to be able to list everything that's going to be in.
Well, no, well, that's what I, I, I want to simplify it.
No commercial vehicles?
Yeah, that it, it not be used, I got it, it won't be used for commercial uses.
Independent commercial use.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I have one-
Any commercial use.
Any commercial use.
I have one additional question.
Go ahead.
If you're done. Um, so when I did a site visit, I noticed there's two trailers there. Will those be housed inside there?
We want to get those inside, yeah, that's precisely it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they'll come off the, the one?
Trailer smokes, no removal equipment, you know, my, uh, uh, grass cutters, things like that. He does, uh, you know, woodworking. He has to fix the whole.
So you would take a condition that this garage is not used for any commercial industrial venture of any type? Does that work?
That'd work for me.
And change the setback?
Point of clarification, I think, for the building inspector, if, for, just trying not to pigeonhole or get us into something that we don't want to get into. Uh, would, if he wanted to someday develop that or open that, uh, or the future owner wants to, they could come before this board and ask for permission.
They have to come back, yeah.
They always come back before the board.
Yeah, okay.
I just want to make it clear, again, I, I read all decisions and I, I scratch my head, so I just want to make sure-
What wording?
If somebody sees this or there's trouble out here, that the next guy can understand exactly what happened. I understand what they're doing, but...
Yeah, so, yeah, I think if you say no commercial, uh, industrial.
I think you want to word it that it's accessory to the two family.
Yep.
And, and, and tell the idea that the, the owner owns the body.
Residential use only, yeah.
This is to maintain this property and two abutting properties, and if anything changes from that, one of them.
Right.
One of them. Sorry, what, why did I think you owned two? We did.
Okay. The Calitri's on it. It's in the family that's in.
So I, I would word it like that, and then somebody can understand, all of a sudden, there's auto mechanics in there that's not working on.
Did you get that wording, Mary Beth?
Accessory to the-
What Rich said.
That, that'll, that'll make it a little easier, right, Sean?
Yeah.
What she said.
What she said.
All right, any questions or comments from the audience?
Mr. Duggan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matthew Duggan, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. Just to get a little bit better understanding of what the structure's going to look like. This is a, uh, single-family structure, I mean, a single-level structure with, uh, three garage bays. Is that essentially what it is? And there is, is there also a, a workshop in addition to the bays?
Do I answer you guys or can I talk to him?
You can answer.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Pictures right there.
Single-story.
Come look at the picture, Mr. Duggan.
Just come on up and look at the plan.
It's a single-story with a pitched roof. There may be some, um, there may be some attic storage up there, but it's not going to be anything that you can, you know, do anything really with.
It is a single-story, though. It's no, uh, no offices or anything on the, on above.
No, no, you wouldn't be able to house anything up there. Like I said, there, there'll be, uh, for framing it, there'll, there'll be ceiling joists going across, so there'll be some space, you know, potentially for some storage, but no dormers, no natural light up there, so, yeah, and there's no headroom up there. There are two doors on the front, two garage doors on the front and one on the back. Um, so, yeah, I guess you could technically say it's a three-bay garage with a workshop there. And, and it'll have a bathroom.
All right, so my only other comment is, uh, these highway corridors, and I'm not sure how this, uh, applies here other than the fact that it's, uh, geographically close to one fourteen, although you wouldn't actually be able to get to it without going, you know, around. But it is essentially in a residential neighborhood, so to always keep that in mind, that, uh, you know, the noise and, and disturbing of, uh, the surrounding neighborhood is always a concern.
Yeah, yeah, he owns the building. These are his tenants, so.
But the board has mentioned, you know, down the road, these, these approvals last forever, right? So it's, you know, you never know what, you know, ten, twenty years from now, what someone will try to do with this property, so that's why these decisions are so important, so, all right, thank you.
That's, that's why we're trying to put some sort of condition on it, so that doesn't happen. Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman of the Board, members of the board, my name is Bob Hanese, and I'm the butter, um, to Tony. And, uh, I just wanted to say that Tony has been, uh, up and honest with me since the beginning. He has, uh, let my wife and I and my daughter know what his intentions were, uh, right from the beginning, right from the beginning. And, uh, we look out our kitchen window, and we will see the back of this, and it's going to be a good, I'd probably say seventy to seventy-five feet away from our kitchen, which is the farthest part of our house that's behind us. And we're not having a problem at all with Tony or any of this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And that's what address?
It's the Bradstreet.
I'm sixty-nine Collins.
Sixty-nine, okay.
Uh, Bill, Bradstreet, Town Meeting Member. If, if at some point in the future, the space that, uh, I believe has been described as unusual because of the choice, if at some point in the future he decides or feels that he needs additional space over the garage, is that what we require him to come back to see you folks?
What we're approving is what he's presenting. If he wants something else, he has to come back.
Okay, and everything that was discussed here will be discussed again?
Rediscussed.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Any other comments? Okay, back to the board. Who do we start?
I think it was me.
With Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Oh, Rich, did you?
Well, if, if, the setback issue, so if we're going to push it back another twenty-five feet, um...
Oh, another five.
You want another?
Another five.
I'm sorry, another five.
Yeah, that's a lot.
We need a plan.
Yeah, I, I can-
Updated plan.
Can I follow up with the plan?
Well, to be fair, Bob's here. We made Bob come back, uh, the same kind of issue, a, a redesigned site.
Sorry, Bob.
We really should vote on the plan.
We can do the deliberations, that's all. And get an idea whether-
Just delays it a month.
It's worth you coming back.
Oh, not a month. We're back in two weeks.
Oh, two weeks, okay.
Right?
Uh, the tenth.
Yeah.
Oh, it is a month.
Almost a month.
Sorry. Talk to MB, she's in charge.
So, all right, can I, can I, just to avoid that, can I ask, uh, the difference between twenty and twenty-five feet? You can see the neighbor that it, uh, it would affect the most, um, and this here. I had no problems with the twenty, twenty, twenty-foot. Is that something that we can, just to avoid a different, another meeting? And a month delay?
Can he sign a plan for you? This plan?
No, he, no, what he's saying is leave it.
So I have done that before, by the way. I, I've modified it, signed it, and then I'll follow up tomorrow with the revised plan.
I don't want to feel, Mr. Griffin, that we, uh-
Sorry, Bob.
We beat him up. Treats him differently, that's all. I'm trying to be fair.
I, I would, uh, suggest that if, um, we're going to go to twenty-five feet, we want another plan.
Yeah, that's no problem. I'm just trying to skip the delay. It seems unnecessary. Okay.
If you want, if you want to get the vote here, uh, you've got to do what is necessary.
So twenty would be no-go?
Well, it's, I'm not the one that objected to it. Uh, Ken was one, and I, John, were you one, too?
Yeah, I mean-
I would like to see at least half.
See half, at least.
At least.
I think that's kind of a rule of thumb we've stuck with, so.
Okay.
Well, why don't we just continue and then we'll, well, let's do the deliberations, anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is your, this is your-
Thank you.
This is your big chance.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm fine with the, with the twenty-five, um, and as long as we have those restrictions we were talking about as far as use, I'm fine with, um, with the plan as it is in front of me, with the twenty-five instead of twenty.
Okay.
Ken?
I, um, echo Anthony, same thing. Um, I, I would, uh, vote for this as, like stated, twenty-five, yeah.
Jeff?
I would approve this with the twenty-five-foot setback and the restrictions.
Okay.
I would also with the, the restrictions.
I as well with the restrictions.
Uh, I too, Mr. Chairman, I just want to be clear on the restrictions, though, because we've been bitten a couple of times in the past.
She wrote it down.
That the, the, no, but the, I just want to be clear, like, the lighting and stuff, it's in keeping with residential lighting, uh, and, uh, you know, landscaped in a residential way, um, so it doesn't start to look like a contractor's ad. And then all the things that Rich said, that MB wrote down. I would vote for it in favor.
Okay.
And I think I'm okay with the twenty as is, but, um, I will go with the will of the board.
Yeah, I kind of agree with John. I, twenty or twenty-five doesn't make much difference to me, but two people on the board, it does, so... So, continue. Is that what you want to do?
Yeah.
Not much choice, Bill, but...
Okay.
All right, can we get a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue this case till September tenth.
What's September tenth?
September tenth. I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll see you September fif-
Thursday before.
Yeah, I'll have it to, tomorrow. It's not a lot of work.
Mr. Chairman, uh, this is our last case, one forty-nine High Street LLC, Dock at eighteen dash four seven seven five, requesting a finding to allow construction of two shed dormers at the rear of the building and an exterior landing on the Perry Street side of the structure in accordance with Section three point eleven of the Danvers zoning bylaws at one forty-nine High Street.
Good evening. It's Bob Christian on behalf of one forty-nine High Street Trust. Mr. Pizul, the principal and my client apologizes for not being able to be here tonight. There was a death in his wife's family, and he's been attending to that all day today. The, uh, project is, um, the, the trust is in the process of renovating this existing four-family building at one forty-nine High Street. And it's a corner lot, as you can see, so here's High Street running up towards one twenty-eight, and here's Perry Street here. And so we have, in this particular parcel, we've got the front yard on High Street and the front yard on Perry Street, and the rear yard and the rear yard. The, uh, the building's probably over a hundred years old, and it's non-conforming. So we have a non-conforming front yard setback here on High Street. Uh, we're in the R-one district, which requires a forty-foot front yard, and we, you can see we have a twenty-foot front yard to the building here. Over here on the Perry Street side, we have a thirty-eight point nine foot setback to that corner where forty feet is required on that side as well. When we look at our rear setbacks, we're conforming on this side opposite High Street, but over here on this side, this rear line is twenty-seven feet where thirty feet is required. We have several non-conformities from dimensional. We also have a non-conforming density. We have, uh, this is a site where the, uh, town granted a special permit in nineteen eighty-four and again in nineteen eighty-six to change what was then a three-family structure to a four-family structure. So since nineteen eighty-six, it's been a four-family residence, and so the density, uh, on this lot is, uh, three thousand four hundred square feet per unit, where seventy-five hundred square feet per unit is required, so that's another non-conformity. We're not proposing any change to the number of units at the, at the building. The, uh, proposal is to construct a couple of shed dormers at the rear of the building, uh, and to construct an entrance, uh, to one of the units here off of Perry Street with a, a little landing and a doorway. Now, um, I know that there's been some architectural plans provided, and I just want to, uh, flip to the, uh, architectural plans by Extrim Home Designs, and I think the last one shows, um, sort of a nice, uh, well, maybe it's not the last one, it's the first one. Shows a picture here, it's sort of a three-dimensional picture of the house. So this is the rear of the house, looking out towards High Street, and you can see that this, this roofline right here now has sort of a conventional gable, and what the architect is proposing is to put a shed dormer here and here, so that the bedroom up on this floor, uh, becomes a little bit larger. So we're, we're, uh, this ha, happens to be the smallest unit in the building. It's unit number two. It has an area of six hundred square feet, so it's kind of a small unit, and getting that, uh, extra bedroom space is important, uh, for that reason. Uh, the entrance over here, uh, is, you can see, there's a, there's a window here, and if you look at your photographs that we included, I think, um, I think photograph number... Photo two, I'm sorry. Photo two has a, a good picture of the side of the building, and you can see there's a window, and basically the plan is to replace that window with a doorway in a four-foot by six-foot landing going out to grade. So that's really it for the architectural changes that we're asking for relief on. We also are looking to modify the site layout a little bit. Right now, we have a parking area along Perry Street. It has about five cars' ability to park here, and then, uh, typically the residents will park also along Perry Street, uh, in the side of the street there. We also have some driveway space here off of High Street where you can do sort of, you know, ballgame or valet parking here and probably get, you know, four cars over here. But the proposal is to change this driveway so that it just has two cars in it, so chop off the back part here. There's also a, a little basketball court here. We're going to lose the basketball court, and as a result, we're going to lose around, uh, eight hundred square feet of impervious surfaces here. We want to expand the parking over on this side towards High Street to add, uh, three additional, uh, spaces here. And, um, so, um, we're, we're going to reduce the- And so, we're going to reduce the need for on-street parking by the expansion of the parking area. And I think that these are all minor changes to the site, but certainly ones that will make the site work a little bit better, and that's why we're asking for these modifications to the 1986 special permit. Be happy to address any questions at this time.
Okay.
Excuse me. Mr. Chairman, well, you had called me on this, and I didn't talk directly, I left a voice message for you.
Uh-oh.
And this is, you have to amend the special permit that's been granted.
And I did ask in our cover letter to modify the special permit. So that's part of our request here, like in the second paragraph, if I remember.
How was it advertised? The application just says finding checked off, so unfortunately, special permit is a 41 vote, the finding's a 32, so...
Okay. Well, I want to get the paperwork right, but, but we did, you know, request an amendment to the 1986 decision, and if we checked off the wrong box on the application, we'd need to re-advertise it.